Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Hello, everyone. It is Tuesday, February 27th. Let's begin our Legislative and Human Resources Committee meeting. Let's pick it up with public comment. Any public comment today? All right, seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from February 13th?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Vaughn, support by Commissioner Talan. All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? All right, moving on to item three, Administrator Office Performance Measurement Review to Update. Matthew Van Zetten.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's getting to that time of the year when performance management updates will start coming again. And so we wanted to start off the season with an overview of where we've been in the past year and what you might expect moving forward. In your pack, we talked, we had a memo that talked a little bit about the history of performance management and how this has been a 20-year journey for the county. You know, it is really, when you think back 20 years ago to where we are today, we are really seen as a leader in the state in terms of a performance management system. And we should become, you know, recognize that and be thankful for that. And as we've gone over, moved forward the past decade or so, it's really become much more of a highlight of our season and our departments working and sharing information with the commissioners and using it as a communication tool. So I wanted to share a little bit about how we are using them and how we've really gone through the process and made it a structured process. We're going to talk a little bit about that today. So one of the things we've been doing is really when we meet with our departments and in preparation for reviewing their outcomes and getting ready for their presentation to the LHR committee, that's really the end of a cycle. It really starts through the departments reviewing and owning their outcomes, identifying their significant accomplishments, and then connecting things to, connecting those outcomes to the Board of Commissioners priorities and linking those together. We've also looked in the past few years about really engaging our employees, not just the department leaders or division directors, but staff that work in the departments are now attending the review committee meetings before we come to this body to ask them and to talk to them about what's going well and what we could improve upon. So as you see here, these are the questions in this conversation that we have as we get ready to meet with you. We ask about the significant accomplishments of the past year, and we tie them into collaboration, community impact, innovation, and now this year we're adding diversity, equity, and inclusion. We ask questions about what are the principal obstacles or challenges you foresee that may hinder your performance in achieving your results. So we learn about what the department leadership, but also staff, think about hindrances and challenges they may face. We ask what can we do to overcome those challenges. We're looking for solution, ideas, and thinking. And then we finish the conversation about the strengths that your department has in achieving its mission. And talking to the departments about, you know, what are your strengths as you see them and the values you bring to the community at large and to the county. So we think this process helps us tell our story better as a county. We utilize these performance measurements in telling our story. So first of all, as an employer, we think having performance measurements, performance management, gives a sense of purpose for our organization. We have a mission that matters, and we serve the public with integrity. We think the performance management system helps with that. As an organization, these are opportunities to share with what we accomplish for our community, whether it's collaboration, impact, or innovation. It gives us an ability to tell that story. And then as a partner, performance management as a partner, because we have a diverse community, and by identifying in our goals diversity, equity, and inclusion, it allows us to find out and talk about specifically, how are we partnering with our broader community and becoming more inclusive as we move forward. I think last year you saw this a little bit during Public Recognition Week. If you remember, last May, we did a series of awards for collaboration, community impact, innovation. We had the Chairman's Award that was Dr. Delabio received. But we had videos that were created, and we were able to tell our story through those videos of our significant accomplishments that were driven through our performance management system. Those vignettes were shared with you, but they were also shared on the Board of Commissioners, or on the county board website. They were shared with all of our staff across the county. And this year, we'll be doing that again. The PMRT team, which is charged with managing the system, has received all of the 2017 significant accomplishments, broken out by collaboration, impact, innovation, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And they're going to be in the process of scoring those now. And they can't score their own, of course, but they're going to be scoring those on a Likert scale. We have about 12 people that will be doing that. And then we're going to narrow those down to the top three, and then have an outside panel select the award winner. And those will be the vignettes and the stories that you'll be seeing during Public Recognition Week in your May meeting. So I think it's, I believe it's May 8th this year. Now, it's one of your evening meetings. And we'll be recognizing those departments and teams as they come here. Video. And then we'll be able to utilize that again on the website, in the community, sharing what we've done, what our successes for the year, and to help the broader community understand the value that the county brings to them. The other part that this derives is the Excellent in Action Handbook or booklet that you've seen. I think Wayman's provided these with you previously. You can use them as you meet with constituents or interest groups or others. But it gives the highlight of our most significant accomplishments for the year and in those various categories, so that you can share about what the county is doing in the community and how we are partnering together to provide a high quality of life for our community. So that's our story for this year. Next few weeks, you'll start to see these reviews. The Health Department and the Clerk are the two departments that are up first. And we look forward to answering questions and working with you this year as we do our PMR Performance Management Reviews. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matthew? You've been the quickest performance manager.
Just a comment.
Okay, sorry.
I just think you're doing a great job, and it keeps the board informed of what you're doing, and we appreciate all your good work. And we made some changes as a result of that and things that we're seeing and where we could make improvements throughout the county, and we appreciate that collaboration between the two organizations. Thank you again.
Commissioner Talan?
Thank you, Chair. Not sure where to begin here. I recognize the importance and the need for kind of recognizing excellence. And so since I've been kind of watching this stuff ever since I started pushing for it back in the 90s, what I'm seeing here feels a little different from what we've done in the past. It feels more PR-oriented. I heard, Matthew, you used the term, the word "impact." But I don't see the word "impact" anywhere in any of these slides. So I guess what I, I have a little bit of concern about how this board eventually recognizes through the performance management process, for example, that we are not meeting our goals as a county in people who come out of jail and go back in.
Recidivism.
Recidivism. And so something like that, we would never see in this. And that seems like a pretty significant thing. So I guess I'm wondering where the "so what" that I've talked about for so long is going to come out.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'd go back to this slide in terms of the conversations we have about the significant accomplishments, collaboration, community impact, innovation, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we do talk with the department specifically about impact. And as we review their performance measures that they provide to you, we do talk to them about, are these the right measures? Are there better measures? Are we measuring the right things? How do we partner with the community? I guess I would state that the county is one of many partners that has to work together to get to those broad impacts that you've talked about, Commissioner. So in terms of recidivism, we can do a great job, and the correctional facility and the court can do a great job. But we also need to work with private business, because jobs, somebody to not recidivate, they need a job. They need a house. There's other aspects that they need and that requires us to be partners with the community, which is why we have to talk about collaboration as well. It can't just be, you know, well, you didn't get your outcome on recidivism. Well, the question has to be deeper than that. How are you partnering with the broader community? What are you doing to drive those relationships and those connections to help the person who's been incarcerated ensure that another crime's not committed? And I think you've seen this year, we have mental health treatment courts that are working to get started. We've started a veterans treatment court in the Wyoming District Court. So I think those kind of parts and pieces are part of that whole story. And I think that the journey that we've been on, your "so what" questions for a number of years has helped us as a PMRT team ask those questions for departments. But as we continue to move forward, we also recognize that we have a lot of great work going on that sometimes just really isn't recognized by the broader community. And we need to use our performance management system to help share those stories too. Unless we're able to show value as to what we're doing as part of a county in our existing pro formas, portfolios of work, people aren't going to want to support those works going forward. And this is that way that we can tie that all together, from the outcomes, the "so whats," the collaborations, to the storytelling in one system that helps drive strategy, culture, all those parts and pieces. So that's kind of a long answer, Commissioner Talan, but I hope it's helpful in providing some more framework.
A Wayman had a comment, too.
Just to add to that, one of the things that we've discovered is that in looking around the country, one of the, one of the key principles that help to reinforce excellence and high performance is constructive accountability. What we mean by that is that oftentimes, we simply do not recognize the good work that the departments do. And so by elevating the accomplishments and creating a venue for which they can be recognized, employees tend to say, you know, the county really appreciates what I'm doing, the department acknowledges what I'm doing. You know what? I'm willing to spend my own time, spend a little bit more of my effort, reach a little higher, do a little bit more, so that we can grow the excellence of the county. So the big part of where we've shifted is to create the engagement and the empowerment of employees, because we feel that we can gain more if the, if they're feeling that they're appreciated and at the same time being held accountable. Because in each department, there are regulations, there are procedures that we have to follow, we know our mandates. But at the same time, we have to look at this and say, what can we do more? And so that's where this is heading.
If I could just follow up with one more observation, which is, I didn't mean to suggest that the PR stuff isn't important and isn't, isn't good, but I think it needs to be a both-and. And if we're not watching the measurables, if we're not watching those impacts, it's got to be a both-and, I think. And I don't want, I don't want the actual important impacts that we need to be watching to get lost, celebrating just the stuff that we're doing. Because we need to celebrate more than, than the things that we're doing. We need to celebrate the "so whats," the outcomes, the stuff that's happening out there in the community. So the reason we're celebrating a good program isn't just because it makes us all feel good, it's because it made some difference out there. And the only way we know that is if we're measuring that stuff. So I'd just throw that out there.
Can I make a comment, too? Maybe you're feeling like you need to see a little bit more data in this, like collective data across all departments, which we could easily do. We could pull each department's, you know, overall data, you know, did they need, did they not, or something like that. Maybe that's kind of what you're missing. But I would also suggest that within each department, we make sure that we're measuring what we want, what you think needs to, you know, be measured, or others. Maybe we look at that because it's almost like when they come here and they do their performance measurement, it's almost too late. Then we're going a whole nother year before we're measuring something again. So, you know, I would encourage you to, you know, get involved in that. Maybe Matthew and Wayman would be open to, to that, because we do need to make sure that we're measuring the right things. By the time they come in, I think we do get those deeper dives by department, but by the time they come in, we're going to have to wait a whole nother year if we want to measure something different. So that would be a suggestion that I'd make.
That's great.
Any other questions? Commissioner Womack?
Well, thank you for your presentation, Matt. And I do appreciate your insight and understanding that some of these metrics that we are measuring are dependent on collaboration. Living in the inner city, I just see a lot of things that, that aren't being addressed in the community, like, you know, when we talk about recidivism, you know, some of that is also tied to some of the drug problems in our community. And there's been years where there was really a lot of outreach and education on drugs in our community far as usage and the push for it not, for it to be, not criminalized so much as having rehabilitation for drug users and making sure when they are locked up that they get information on programs, to give them that option that we can't force them to be in these programs. But I do like your insight that it is going to take collaboration, felons who can't get jobs, felons who are moving. I've seen felons who are living with a family member when they come out of jail. But then the apartment says, well, you're a felon, you can't live here. So now this guy is thrust upon the street with no job, no place to live, family complaining to our radio station about, you know, how can we not help this person? Because our landlord is saying he can't live here because he's a felon. So I just like your insight on that collaboration, because we have to put a full scope in West Michigan on how much discrimination is against these felons as they try to turn their life around. Not saying they all want to turn their life around, but this scope is, you know, a lot bigger than, sometimes than one department. So I do like that insight, and I do agree with Jim Talan that we do need to look at these metrics a little more closely. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matthew? Thanks for all your work. Appreciate your update. All right, on to item four, Public Affairs Associate's Update by Becky Becker. Legislative update. And then I'm going to ask Becky to stay up there for item five, our legislative priorities. A little bit of them.
Absolutely. Good morning. Since the governor proposed his budget a couple weeks ago, the legislature is fully engulfed in the legislative process within the budget. The subcommittees are meeting, having budget overviews, unpacking the governor's budget in detail, so that they can determine what they can support, what they may not support, with the idea that they would conclude the budget process hopefully within the first two weeks of June. I believe that they plan to further condense the budget conversation in hopes to get out, because it's an election year, and begin the campaign season. So you might see a more compact budget process, which is why the hearings are very robust right now. In the governor's proposal, it's, he recommends a $56 billion budget, which is only a 2.5% increase, and $10 billion general fund, which is 1.75, which is almost a flat budget. So it makes it a little bit problematic for any growth within the budget. However, the governor did propose a focus on reducing the state's debt, as well as putting resources where he believes they should be. An increase to K-12 funding, per pupil funding was certainly important to the governor. He's recommending that. He's also recommending spending cash where traditionally they were anticipating using bonds for those two items. One is the continuing revenues, re, I'm sorry, I'm losing track. The capital has had a lot of renovations, and they want to pay for that in cash, as well as the new veteran homes. They were going to bond for that, and the governor is recommending cash. The second thing that the governor is recommending is raising the tipping fees for landfills for the Clean Michigan Initiative rather than bonding, as well as a $25 million fee increase for large water. That is come with some hesitation, as you can imagine, especially within the House of Representatives, which traditionally pushes back on any type of fee increases. However, the Speaker of the House has indicated he's willing to have that conversation. He's just not willing to have that conversation about tipping fees until after the November election. So most likely, that issue would be put on hold until the November elections. But that may not go away, so we can still have further conversations. Troubling is also the governor's recommended on county revenue sharing. If you recall, in the last year's budget, the governor recommended $220 million for county statutory revenue sharing. That was about a 1% increase. This year, the governor is recommending $218 million. And we have two counties coming back on the revenue sharing formula, which basically negates that 1% increase that the governor proposed last year. A lot of that is equated to the personal property tax reimbursement. Since the governor enacted that personal property tax, there has been reimbursement over 100% has gone back to counties. Last year, the governor tried to change a very complicated formula, and this year, he's seeking to do that again. This year, they anticipate about $153 million in excess personal property tax. Traditionally, that goes back to the local units of government. This year, the governor would like to use that for other purposes. He'd like to use that for fire protection grants. He'd like to give 15% to community colleges, and then the rest going to local units of government. I think that's going to be a conversation that we need to have with our West Michigan delegation about the fact that that's diluting that pot of money that traditionally goes to counties, cities, and villages. And I think we need to watch that very carefully as the governor's proposal goes through the process. Equally concerning is the governor's proposal on the indigent defense funding. In 2013, the legislature created a commission to look at how the state handles indigent defendants and make sure that they get proper representation, as well as a formula for county reimbursement. The governor's office is proposing changing that reimbursement formula, as well as timelines. I believe that in talking with the Michigan Association of Counties when they did some sampling specifically to Kent County, the governor's proposal could be very detrimental to the county. Could be, we would be a donor county versus a county that would be a recipient of funds. So I think we need to talk with those individuals that are going to be looking at that about how we can better stabilize that process with indigent defense funding. I know that plans have been required to be submitted for reimbursement, similar to how they do the county childcare fund, where your issues are reimbursable. They want to change what is reimbursable. And I said, so I think we need to make sure that as the statutory changes are introduced, that we have a conversation about how that could affect the county. Other implications within the budget that might be good news is additional funding for PFAS. The governor's recommending an additional $8 million for PFAS for local units of government, as well as testing for PFAS. If you recall, just before the end of the year in a supplemental, there was about $2.5 million for PFAS funding. I think we're still working on capturing some of those dollars from that, but we should also be watching this PFAS recommendation. The governor's also recommending $4.8 million for local public health departments for emerging health issues. Some of those health issues that they cited was hepatitis C and mosquito and tick illnesses, as well as some other environmental-borne illnesses, such as vapor intrusion and other environmental issues. This is good news, that at least the governor's putting more money into local public health. Traditionally, that is something that is, never happens in a governor's budget, local public health funding. But I know that's important for our county health department to get additional funds. The governor's also including expansion of the pathways to potential program at $5.6 million. If you recall, in last year's budget, the county was able to capture some new coaches due to this program. And so we're hopeful to retain this allocation so that we can apply for those funds. The governor also unveiled last week his Marshall Plan, and that is based on preparing students better for those that may not go on the four-year college track, but still are talent-ready and for a career. $100 million one-time, five-year work plan. Half of that is already allocated to current plans within the executive office, but he's also using $25 million for scholarships, circling off of what the FLYT promise and the Deterite promise of scholarships. And this would be a statewide scholarship program to help students engage in the community college aspect and other career path training, so that we're ready for the new, the new talents that are going to be necessary in emerging issues. And finally, the governor recommended transportation funding for roads. In last year's budget, there was $175 million in labs funds. The governor recommended that you take all those labs funds and move it into road funding. The legislature clearly thinks that's an excellent idea, and the House last week moved that into a supplemental and passed that out of the House, and the Senate is planning to vote on it this Wednesday in the Appropriations Committee. So $175 million could be signed by the governor within the next two weeks. That equates to about $68 million to the 83 counties, and I believe it's somewhere around $3 million for Kent County. So that's at least some additional funds that would be available immediately for the county. That completes my update. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions for Becky today. Commissioner Hornet?
Just a question, Becky. In economic projections and taxes, since things you said are flat, very small increase, does that mean things aren't going as well in Michigan as they are in other places overall?
Not necessarily, because I think the governor would believe that the economy is doing very well. His choices are to spend cash to reduce debt, so I think a lot of the money that he's recommending is going to pay these one times, so that we don't have to bond. He's also-
So there is growth, it's just not being put into the budget, is what you're saying.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
They also did, if you recall, they did some, some challenges with regard to the federal tax implications, so the homestead property tax. So they made some changes that, that took a lot of the money out of what could be available right now.
Financial responsibility fees. Financial responsibility fees maybe.
Exactly. That was a huge expense that had to come right out and be paid for separate from the budget. Those were agreements made with the legislature, deals if you will, that took away. So I think everybody agreed that the economy is doing well, that they're just choosing to spend some of this money in different places.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Becky, on the road funding, I get a chance to talk to the director from time to time, Kent County Road Director, and he said we still haven't reached the 2,000 level yet. And where does this put us on that trajectory towards that level of road funding versus what it once was?
You know, that's an excellent ques- I will check to see how far behind we are. I know the governor is recommending additional money. He's trying to move us forward. I don't think we're there yet, but let me get some detail as far as are we even inching closer to that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
Just a quick question. Of the $3 million that might be coming to counties upon the governor's signature, can you tell me, I didn't catch if that was earmarked for certain expenditures or if that was going to the general funds for these counties to use as they see fit, or is it earmarked for certain outcomes and expenditures?
I don't know if it's specifically laid out how that money could be used for the road commission, but I will see if I could get any more detail for you. I just know in the initial conversations and what has been laid out, it was about $3 million to the county, but I could certainly contact Steve Warren to see if he has any further detail for you.
Oh, that's fine. I can do a little homework into it. Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. And good morning, Becky.
Good morning.
The governor's recommendation to increase the tipping fees by $4.90, I think it was, is that still the target in the conversation at the legislature, or is there no other numbers being bantered around? That's the first question. The second one is, and what is that money going to be used for?
The Clean Michigan Initiative bond, what the governor would like to do is raise that tipping fee rather than having to bond again, so it would be replacing bond sales. I don't think that this conversation has fully been disclosed. I know that the, those involved have thought about it, there have been conversations, but when the speaker indicated that he wanted to kick this can down the road till after the election, I think a lot of the steam came out of the room and realized that they can wait. I don't think that it's dead upon arrival, like I think many believe, but it's still a conversation that needs to be had, if you will, in more detail. But I have not heard any other alternative proposals yet, but I'm sure that other folks will have a say in that, absolutely.
It's a tipping fee that if it's approved would be in perpetuity, it would continue?
Correct.
Commissioner Dillon.
Thank you, Chair. At the MAC Health and Human Services meeting yesterday, there were a number of legislative issues that I didn't hear Becky comment on. I'm wondering if I could go through some of those and get your thoughts about them as well. The first one was an attempt to recover some Medicaid support through DSH, or DRS, sorry, DSH Recovery Services. They are suggesting that there could be anywhere from $40 to $60 million that could be recovered from the federal government that Michigan was entitled to, which then would go back to counties. They thought there was some possibility of that happening. Are you familiar with that? Could you comment on that? Is that wishful thinking on some people's part?
I'm sorry, I'll have to get some more detail on that unless I'm misunderstanding the question.
Well, what they said is it really requires our DHHS department, our Medicaid Director, to go after those dollars, and there's some question whether they're really interested in doing that. But it's potentially a significant amount of money, and if I crunch the numbers, Commissioner Steck has often talked about 10% going back to Kent County statewide. You know, we're looking at millions of dollars potentially coming into this community. So I appreciate it if you could see whether that's something we should talk to legislators about or press.
That's the Department of Michigan recovery?
No, this goes way back to, goes back further than that, I think, but it would be helpful to get that clarification. I never heard it mentioned that it was Healthy Michigan. The 9/11, 911 surcharge, that's done? That's happening, right?
Correct.
Has the governor signed it yet or not?
I don't believe the governor signed it, but the House did give its approval, so it's probably on its way through that process.
So my question is, is that, do you have any sense for what that includes in terms of auditing the providers to make sure that they're remitting the right amounts?
There is some language in there. I don't believe that it fully captures where we wanted, as far as we wanted it to go. There is a process through the Public Service Commission where we could perhaps offer an appeal. I don't believe that's a full solution to our problem, but it's a step in the right direction. Amendments that we saw both in the House and the Senate were rejected by the bill sponsor as well as the committee chairs as being too difficult to get through with this legislation. But it's, I think there's a small step forward there.
So maybe something that we can follow up on and find out what that is and whether-
Yes, on our list.
Yeah, okay. There's also, and I didn't get the bill nor, but talk about a county veteran service fund that's being established, looking at about $5 million. That would come back to the county veteran services departments. That would be something else that I think if we're not aware of that we ought to be checking out since we have a pretty robust program here. The, I think I mentioned this before, there's this legislation that's going to require the Health Department to monitor vision screenings and the eye stuff. Any sense of where that's at? That's a potential significant cost to our Health Department to monitor that.
Yes, we've been in conversation with the Department of Health and Human Services as well as the stakeholders that are proposing this legislation. And what we're trying to do is remove the county's, I guess, impact on that, and I believe they're receptive to the amendments that we are asking for that would reduce the, I guess, the amount of money that would be mandated upon us.
So we're feeling pretty positive about not adding-
I believe, yes.
-an unfunded mandate to-
I believe we're heading in the right direction, yes.
All right, thank you. I'll do it. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I'm trying to get some questions answered when it comes to education. It went through the House that there would be millage revenue from public school millages for charter schools. I want to find out where that bill is. Has it been signed into law and how does the governor's office project this will affect public schools?
It was signed into law, I believe, within the last two weeks. And I know it's not retroactive, but I don't have any detail as far as the implications moving forward.
Okay, thank you, because a lot of my constituents and I want to make sure people on the school board also know that it's not retroactive.
Correct.
Because a lot believe it is.
It is not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Farnes.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. When you had mentioned about the road funding for the road commissions, we're using lapse funding. What departments in the state are responsible for the big chunks of that lapse money? Because all I hear is every department doesn't have enough money, yet there's money left at the end of the day that could have been used in the previous year for stuff that was actually needed.
I did not see the breakdown, but I know that it's available and I'd be happy to get that for you. I know the Health and Human Services budget is the largest, so that would probably be one that would have, most likely to have lapse funds, but I'll get that complete breakdown for you.
Thank you. And who's going to win the governor's race this year?
Yes.
All right. Any more questions for Becky before we go into item five? All right, let's move into item five. Do I have a motion? We're going to move into our legislative priorities. As you guys recall, we did a work group on this. We have had meetings on this. A lot of these issues, as mentioned before, are carryover from last year because we are in the same two-year session cycle. I want you to look it over real quick and then do I have a motion?
So, support.
All right, motion by Hornet, support by Steck. All right, any discussion on these, on our priorities? We did add, Commissioner Vaughn, as you'll see, the waste to energy issue. Thanks for bringing that up to us. And I do want to also say that though it says final in your memo, there will be things that come up. And this is not carved in stones. There are going to be things that come up that we will need Becky's help on and will become a priority this year, I'm sure. So just want to make sure that we're comfortable moving forward with these. We do need to get them approved by the board before we have our legislative breakfast in a couple of weeks, so it's kind of where we're at. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to acknowledge the format of these. When I first started, we didn't have the sort of designation of, you know, what is funding, what is policy, what's a monitoring issue. I think it is a significant advance in our bill to manage what these objectives are. I also appreciated, at least in the process, the point in analysis where we sat back and looked at what did we accomplish? What have we been able to push in these objectives? Because we don't do that enough in saying, well, where did we land? So appreciate that. I think this is a good start, as you point out. It's not the end. It's a moving target. It's a moving document, but it's a great, I think it's a great start.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Dillon.
Well, I was going to say the same thing, so thank you for seeing that stand-up format particularly and categorizing them like that. I was a little afraid maybe I had missed it last year. It had changed before, because I really do appreciate that also.
All right, all in favor of moving these priorities forward? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, move on to the board for full approval. Moving on to item six, addition of two full-time corrections officers. I'm going to call Chuck Dewitt to give us kind of a overview of this request.
There is a request.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I need a motion.
I have a motion.
Support.
Okay, backed by Commissioner Vaughn, support by Commissioner Womack, and I'm going to have Ashley Wayman read this request before we talk to Chuck and Dar.
All right. This is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to add two full-time correction deputies assigned to oversee work release inmates at the Department of Public Works Recycling and Education Center and appropriate $271,810 to the sheriff's 2018 Special Project Fund budget from the Department of Public Works. The Kent County Sheriff's Office and Department of Public Works piloted a program in November 2017 to staff a deputy and the Kent County Recycling and Education Center to oversee approximately 15 inmates in a work release program to provide workers for the process line. Corrections deputies provide oversight of inmates while away from the correctional facility, transportation to and from the recycling and education center, and increase security should an emergency arise. The cost for wages and benefits for two full-time corrections deputy positions and work time mills for the inmates is $271,810 and will be fully funded by the DPW. In the event funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions will be eliminated unless continuation funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policy, grants, contracts, and donations.
All right. Let's begin our questions. Commissioner Farnes.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just a quick question, not so much about the deputies and what they're going to be doing, but with this program where we're using inmates at the DPW, is it more to the program than just, you're an inmate, we're going to assign you here to sort recycling? Or are we working on maybe the bigger picture, introduce new job skills and maybe get them ready for when they are released from the jail that it's just not a cycle to get them back in?
Good morning, Commissioner. It's a great question. DPW has used a number of different staffing models in the past, and this one we think will work well in the future. And to your point, it's a three-legged stool in that we just hired, with the board's full approval, three line leads who will actually be supervising the corrections, the work release staff while they're on site. We use FedIG, which is our temporary agency that allows the inmates to be able to work at our facility. And then we use the sheriff's department to provide the oversight from a corrections perspective. We believe it's helpful for these reasons. One is they're being paid minimum wage, so they're actually earning a living while they're in jail. It allows them to develop work history and it allows them to begin to put a resume together. And it allows us to work with them to demonstrate what it means to be able to work every day, to show up on time, and put a pattern of success together. So we believe in the long term it will be helpful and that we will allow these inmates who are in jail to be more productive during the day, to see work history, to know what that looks like, to be able to get up there on time, be able to show up on time. We start at seven in the night at the processing facility on market, and we wrap up at five. We also work most Saturdays, so these inmates are there Monday through Saturday, depending on how they're scheduled. FedIG works with them. Our line leads and supervisors work with them to schedule them throughout the week. And then the corrections officers make sure that they are able to get there on time, that they have lunch available to them. So I think we're building a lot of structure and purpose around what their future could look like.
And I appreciate that, and thanks for the clarification. And, you know, it's just another example of we have so many departments in the county, Department A, B, C, and there's more opportunities where, you know, you've got the sheriff's department and the DPW working on something that hopefully will be benefiting not only the inmates, but the community as a whole. So, I mean, there's so many opportunities like this, and this is a perfect example of it, so I appreciate your work and cooperation between departments.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mention Dar Bosser, our DPW director. Thanks, Dar. Question from Commissioner Steck.
Actually, three questions, Chair. Thank you. So first off, this total cost of $271,000 and change, how does that compare to our total cost with the previous program working with Goodwill?
Sure. So the Goodwill program was a combination of work release through the sheriff's department and temporary employees through Goodwill. We were spending on a trajectory of about $1.1 million per year for that program to staff the process line. It costs approximately $41,000 per process position throughout the year. This new program, using the sheriff's department, FedIG, and our line leader in total, will come in at about $950,000, so it's less than what we were spending before. But the benefit is that the sheriff's department is on site and providing a higher level of security and oversight, because there are times when work release workers need a little correction or motivation or assist, you know, our staff needs assistance, and that's where the sheriff's department can step in and have those conversations with the workers. So it's actually less than what we were spending in the past.
Okay, and that leads me to number two, which is, can you discuss, are there two officers at the plants all the time? Just how, what are they doing? What are we paying for?
So there's two officers that are scheduled throughout the week. There's only one officer on site at a time because they have to be there at seven, and I believe they wrap up and leave at five or six. It actually extends the day, so it takes, and we work Monday through Saturday, so you have two officers covering all of those hours. And I think there's a few hours left that we're paying, I think, more on an hourly rate, but it takes two officers in total to be able to cover the Monday through Saturday. I'm assuming that they're probably on site at the sheriff's department by six or so to make sure that the work release inmates are ready. And then by the time they get them back in the evening, and I'm sure it's past six, so it's almost like a 12-hour day.
And then lastly, just clarify here, all of this money is coming out of your DPW enterprise fund and not from the general fund?
Correct. We have dollars set aside to operate the recycling center. This is a money that was budgeted in 2018. I think our budget was $1 million, and the total program for process line labor should come in under a million this year.
Great, thanks, Dar.
Commissioner Dillon.
Thank you, Chair. I was trying to get a kind of historical context for this, and I think I've gotten most of it from the previous questions, but what I'm hearing is we're kind of back to the corrections folks now. We were doing the Goodwill, which was a combination. Were we doing something similar to this before that? What's that history look like? I'm just- So if you go way back, there was a time when we- So if you go way back, there was a time when we were using actually prison labor from Ionia County, and I believe potentially Muskegon. It's before my time, but that's my recollection from the discussions. We, for a long time, used work crew blended with community corrections.
So probation?
And the difficulty there is the work crew, the motivation and the ability to get them to appreciate why we're there. They were there for sort quality and how quickly they were working was a real challenge. And scheduling was very difficult, and it just seemed that over the years, the type of work crew person that was coming in just was less and less motivated to be there even though they were required to be there. With the changes in the market in China, both in 2013 and again this past year, quality continues to be a significant pressure, even as prices are dropping because there's so much material in the domestic market. So the best way is to ensure that we have workers that are motivated and want to be there and want to sort well. So it's been a combination of prison labor, work crew, community corrections, and Goodwill was using both work release and some of their own people through their program. So it's been a variety of things over the years. Goodwill actually canceled their program in 2017, November.
Okay. And there's a sense that the current, the proposed method here will provide more motivation to the employees?
Since 2000, since November, when we moved over to this new model, the manager that runs the recycling center has had very positive comments. In fact, if you recall, during our shutdown, we had a variety of equipment moving in and being replaced, and we had volunteers, if you will, they're being paid, but volunteers during that shutdown who weren't on the process line, but were from work release who were painting and cleaning, and they did a fantastic job. The facility looks fantastic. So even during that time, they were doing a really good job. And I'm hearing continued good things, along with the fact that we now have three additional DPW line leads working up on the line next to the crew, next to the workers, that are ensuring sort quality, productivity, and those types of things. So it has worked well.
And just one quick clarification, these are volunteers from the jail?
No.
Well, I mean, they're being paid, but do they, they're not being conscripted to do this particular work or?
So any inmate that wants to work outside the facility has to go through a selection process. They volunteer, they want to go outside the community to work as a stepping stone. This is an avenue to get there. So A, they have to be sentenced, and then B, they have to be minimum custody qualified.
Yeah. But they're not required to do this? Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Vonk?
Yes, so just a comment. This came to the DPW board, which Commissioner Skaggs is a part of. Dan serves as vice chair, I serve as chair, and this has been problematic since we opened the recycling center. And Goodwill's been a part of that. We had community service workers there initially, and they damaged the restrooms and whatnot, and we had to get porta-johns for that issue. And then we had a good relationship with Goodwill, but to get the workers on site because it's a low-paying work, we'd need 10, they'd invite 15. Sometimes eight would show up, sometimes 15. They'd bill us for the 15, and so that was, that became problematic. We had a good relationship if the right number of workers would show up on any given workday. And so now we're going to plan three or four of the plans we had, and they should be more financially stable and productive. At the DPW, it's a penny business, just like some of the big box stores. You move a lot of dollars, but the dollars left over to do other things in recycling and handling of trash is just a few cents on the dollar. So this is one of the main problems that we've had of the pieces that we manage at the DPW is the recycling center and working with these folks. And we put the new cardboard screener in there, which has reduced the workload and other issues that have been solved over time as a result of that. So we're doing a good thing with recycling, but in the meantime, it's problems that need to be addressed, and we think this is the best way to handle it at this time.
Commissioner Romanek?
Yes, I wanted to ask, when the Department of Public Works puts this money into this program, this $271,000, what will be the wages per year for the corrections deputies and a little more breakdown of how that will be used, that funding?
So the funding is based on the top wage deputy and then all the fringes and benefits that come along with that. Right off the top of my head, I believe it's right around $72,000, $73,000 per deputy plus their benefits. There's some overtime that's factored in there just in case they go over their allotted hours, and then all the other costs associated with those staff.
And what are some of the incentives and rewards for these inmates to participate in this program?
Awards? Well, they get to get out of the jail. Obviously, staying inside 24/7 is not fun. So they get the opportunity to go out into the community. There's a satisfaction of, one, earning a wage that will help support their family, but at the same time, obviously, working for the citizens of Kent County, they get the satisfaction of being able to pay back, if you will, for the crimes that they committed. Much like Dar said, it's a resume builder. Oftentimes, this is the first time that they could be on a regimented schedule. They have to wake up on time, prepare their sleeping area, their bunks as normal, to then be out, ready to be driven to the recycler, recycling position to then fulfill a honest day's worth of work, to come back and start over again.
So they can't earn funds towards some of their restitution?
I'm sorry.
Are there any funds that are raised for these inmates for their restitutions either to victims or of their crimes?
Sure. So it's their money. So what happens is they are paid through the temp agency. There is a room and board fee that is assessed, and then the remainder of their money is theirs to spend as they so choose.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you, Chair. So I guess my question is, we wouldn't be using correction officers if we didn't have inmates on the line doing the work. So I assume that this is really all about preserving safety and security because we're using inmates?
Correct. There's a couple of things at play. One is the ability to transport them to and from.
Right.
And the sheriff's department provides that as part of the program. We also provide a lunch for them through the sheriff's department. And ultimately, as the sheriff's department would concur, is they are still inmates and they are low risk, but things can happen. And so that corrections officer is there to make sure that if an inmate steps out of line, it is beyond our DPW staff to correct, that they're there. And there's probably a general knowledge that those inmates are there working simply because, you know, there's shared information from the inmates and from others, and to ensure that there's not going to be an issue, that corrections officer is there to maintain security.
Part of the vetting, I assume, is if they're really a security risk, they wouldn't qualify for this position to begin with.
That's my understanding through the sheriff's department. They could speak more directly to that.
Correct. They are minimum custody inmates. So if they were to not, perhaps they would move on from this position, and there's other opportunities out in the workforce that they would potentially be able to secure, such as a job on their own, or we also have a relationship with the road commission, and they can go out on a work cruise and work alongside that deputy or even with our M.D. crews.
So they're motivated to be doing what they're doing. And I guess I'm just wondering, are there other options other than a full correction officer that cost what they've cost? Is there another staff option other than a correction officer to provide that security?
You know, we discussed that with the sheriff's department, and ultimately, we felt that, given the fact that there's 15 inmates from the, excuse me, the jail, that the best way to handle that is with an officer on site. Is it inexpensive? No. It does cost to have that there, but I think the benefits outweigh the cost in that. My understanding is that a lot of the other positions, whether it's trustee or someone working for the road commission, that they're not paid often. And so this program actually allows us to pay the inmate, build a resume, and move them Part of the other challenge that you have is that West Michigan has full employment, and both Goodwill was challenged by, and the temp agency is challenged by even trying to find someone. This is not easy work by any means, and it's repetitive, and it's challenging, and sometimes it's really hot, and sometimes it's not as warm as you'd like. All those other factors makes it difficult to find temp agencies that would even offer employees that, one, would be there, or, two, would stay. So we think, even though there is a cost to providing the corrections officer, knowing that the transportation's taken care of and all these other things are beneficial to the program.
Yeah, I guess the question is, are there alternatives to the correction officer? So do we have other alternative staff levels other than going all the way to a full correction officer to provide that security? If it doesn't have to be a security because you have high-risk inmates, and if not, if you looked at it and there really aren't, and we, this is as cost-effective as you can have and still have security, I got that, accept that.
Yeah. At the sheriff's office, it's correction staff or civilian staff, and the civilian staff do not provide security for the inmates that are involved with other ancillary duties. So the sheriff's department, we have the one option, which is correction staff, much to what has been discussed. One of the advantages with the correction staff providing the security is that transportation issue. If it's not provided by our staff, we're reliant on family members, friends, or other members of the community to show up, to pick the inmate up, to then drive them to their work location. And that's what Commissioner Vonk was speaking to when, well, sometimes there's eight inmates that show up because the ride didn't arrive for that particular group of inmates, and thus they're now shorted, and they can't do the work that was expected for that day.
Any other questions? I just want to say I really enjoyed my tour of the recycling center a couple of weeks ago. It was incredible to me, the work that's done there. I probably wouldn't be my first choice for a job, so I totally understand why it's difficult to find people and just appreciate all the work you do. Thank you. All right. Are we ready to vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Moving on to item seven, 63rd District Court magistrate appointment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Corneck, support by Commissioner Vonk. All right. Wayman, you read.
Yes, this is a recommendation to the board to appoint Matthew Mapes as magistrate for 63rd District Court. MCL 600.8501 reads, "The county board of commissioners shall provide for at least one magistrate when recommended by the judges of the district. Additional magistrates may be provided by the board upon recommendation by the judges of the district, and the appointments shall be subject to approval by the county board of commissioners before a person assumes the duties of the office of magistrate. For the past several years, the 63rd District Court has operated with one full-time magistrate with support from the district court administrator and deputy district court administrator, who have also been appointed to serve as magistrates. The court has recently hired Matthew Mapes to fill the vacant deputy court administrator position. Mr. Mapes possesses the required qualifications necessary to serve as a magistrate in the state of Michigan. The judiciary of the 63rd District Court recommends and recommend, requests and recommends to the board of commissioners the appointment of Matthew Mapes as magistrate."
All right. We have Hillary Arthur here today, administrator for the 63rd District Court. Are there any questions for Hillary today? Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you. Is Mr. Mapes here? Can you introduce him?
Yes, I will. I can stand up. This is Matthew Mapes. He's our new deputy court administrator and hopefully will be magistrate as well soon.
Great. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Skaggs?
Maybe my reading comprehension isn't great, but this is not a new position.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. This is filling a vacant position. Matthew's already on board, has been with us for about three weeks as deputy court administrator. And in order to support our full-time magistrate so that we can have full coverage and the public does not have to wait when he is not available, either on vacation or during the day, we've structured the court so that the administrator and the deputy court administrator both can do those duties as backup for him.
Okay.
Any questions? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of appointing Matthew Mapes?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Congratulations, Mr. Mapes. Moving on to item eight, miscellaneous. Do we have Commissioner Miscellaneous today? Commissioner Vonk?
Since we had an opportunity to talk trash this morning, invitation is always out to see any part of the business, whether it be recycling or waste energy or go to the landfill. So if you want to see what trash is all about, we'll be more than happy to show you.
Anything else? All right, I just have one. I'm going to be making a small subcommittee appointment of myself, Commissioner Skaggs, and Commissioner Skaggs to do the, fill the vacancies for our KDL and our check boards. We're beginning shortly, we did get those applications. We had to hold additional, I think, an additional month of openings for applications, so we will be appointing them hopefully within the next month or so. All right, we are adjourned.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.